Testing.
Testing.
Here.
Warren Hartenstein is absent. Used. Pat Shaw. Your place.
Here.
Janice Chan.
Here.
Chairman Vaughn Ford's here. Councilwoman Snegas has not arrived yet. Although she's in another meeting. There's another meeting going on across the hall. But anyway, we'll acknowledge her when she comes.
Is your mic on? It's not coming through.
Light on. Light's on.
I'm sorry, the light was reflecting through the green button and it made it look like it was on.
Thank you.
Shall I do this again?
They heard it on the other one.
Okay. Thank you. Here she comes. Councilwoman Snegas is also present. And we have a call. So we're gonna consider the first item on, actually the only item that's on the agenda. Is that what we just handed out here?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'm looking for a title for this thing.
What are you looking for, sorry? The title?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the agenda. So I'll just, it's a dumpster pad, dumpster screening ordinance.
Okay.
And so it'd be, it would be a change to chapter 205 11 of the zoning code. So as with all things that are zoning related, we come, of course, to the planning commission for consultation and then we take that information and provide that to the mayor and council as part of the introduction of the ordinance.
Okay.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes, go ahead, please, Tim.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. So every so often, the International Property Maintenance Code, that group ICC, they come out with a new revised version of the property maintenance code. And then we go through and we make a bunch of amendments to it. So we were under 2018 and we just recently moved from the 2018 version to the 2021 version. For the most part, the only things that changed between 2018 and 2021 was that the first section of the International Property Maintenance Code has a bunch of legal stuff in it. And there's court cases that go on all the time and I'm sure, you know, people lose on them based on what they had. So then they make these kind of revisions over time. So when we adopted the 2021, we adopt all the legal stuff. Then we look at all the amendments that we made and we think about what's happened recently and are there any other property maintenance issues that we should deal with? So one of the things that we added in the property maintenance code was you have to have dumpster screening and it needs to be on a pad. And then depending on where that dumpster is located, depends on the type of screening. So if you're behind a building versus a dumpster that's near the street that you can see from public view. But we didn't actually have a dumpster screening ordinance. We just said that you had to do it, but then there was no direction. So that's all that's here. It's short. There's not a ton here really, except it talks about the height of the screening, where bollards should go, some of that stuff. And then I've given you something called Appendix A and it talks about the construction of the dumpster pad and where the dumpster should go and a lot of information. So this was already sent through Department of Public Works and vetted. They were okay with this. Not that there's not something that couldn't be improved if you see anything. So there's a little miscommunication on my end. I'm sorry that you guys didn't get this sooner. But I think we could still have a general conversation about dumpster pads and dumpster screening and things to avoid. Or because it's pretty short, I can give you guys a couple of minutes and then we can discuss it.
Okay. So can we go ahead and throw some questions at you?
Yep, go for it.
Okay. Has everybody, I don't want to interrupt everybody's reading. But the first thing is would this enclosure be considered as an appurtenance on the property? And would it count? I know it'll count towards critical area and impervious surface and all that. But would it count against the property owner as far as maximum lot coverage and all those kinds of things?
Not any more than it would now. I mean, all these places that we're thinking of, they already have dumpsters. So this would just be an enclosure that the dumpster would be in to screen it. But I, so I, not any.
But it's going to apply to new construction.
It will apply to all new construction. But again, I mean, on these properties now, they have a dumpster. It's just not enclosed. So the dumpster would take up, I mean, it's usually not in grass. It's on some part of the concrete or the parking lot.
The thing I'm thinking of is that the slab that the dumpster sits on is what we call in construction, flat work. Same as a sidewalk. And generally speaking, on any property, flat work does not count against lot coverage as far as building structures are concerned. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. But the minute you start screening this thing, particularly if you enclose it with brick or something that's other than just chain link fence with things stuck through the chain link, you're moving into the realm of a structure like a garage. It just doesn't have a roof on it, that's all. Now, and how is the city going to consider that, you know? That's.
Yeah, I mean, I guess we, hmm. We wouldn't review it as, I mean, as lot coverage. It'd also be kind of small. So like it would, I think if it would trigger something, I mean, it would be like right on the edge. If there was 50% lot coverage, I mean, this would be a small, small item. But I guess we could just.
I'm thinking that if you might want to sharpen that in this legislation to say something to the effect that as long as a roof is not put over it, which it almost never would be within, in the case of a dumpster, as long as it's unroofed, it would not be considered a structure on the property. It would be treated more like a fence.
Got it.
Even if it's, they decide to brick it in on all sides.
Okay.
Which some of these things are bricked in because it fits the motif of like McDonald's or something, you know?
Right. Yeah, that would be, that would be required in some situations. So if it's in the front or side of the yard or highly visible from any public street, must be made of masonry, brick, stone, reinforced concrete or other similar style. Finish an appearance of principal building located on the same lot. So if it's a brick building and it's a public facing dumpster, then we would ask for a brick wall.
Okay. And then you got to consider when it's attached to the main building or detached from the main building. And really what I'm saying here is it, some thought needs to be given as to what the side effects are of passing this ordinance and what it does to the, to the property owner as a result of that when they're trying to take this screened in dumpster pad and just for aesthetics, they try to, they want to tie it to their building.
Right.
So that you don't have all these structures all over the place. And then all of a sudden they pay a penalty for that.
Right.
And so they've got to intentionally detach it to keep from setting off another requirement. Everybody understand what I'm talking about here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We just got to be mindful of that because we do these things with all the best intentions and then all of a sudden we're causing somebody a world of hurt inadvertently.
Got it, thank you.
Anybody else?
Tim, are temporary dumpsters regulated in any way?
They can't be in the street or you have to ask for a street permit if it's on your property, no.
Okay.
There is something new in the property maintenance code this year looking at temporary containers, so not temporary dumpsters, but temporary storage containers. We sort of had it tucked in the fee schedule, which was sort of a weird place for it. So we allow them up to, up to one year at 90 day intervals and then they have to remove them. That'll also include semi truck trailers that people are using for storage. You see them at a lot of the tire shops in town, along 40, they just have truck trailers. So we'll have those permitted and give them another year to figure out how to, how they're going to have more permanent storage for those things. But that's separate from this ordinance.
One more thing. You're using the term dumpster. The big containers, the trash collection containers, come in two flavors. One's called a dumpster and the other's called a roll-off container. And they're quite different. One, you just pick it up and set it down. And the other one has to roll on and roll off the back of a truck. So you might want to just use both terms in there.
Okay, I'll look at the definition section. I think I did, but I don't remember what it said now, but I can make sure that's.
Yeah, in other words, it might cover that, is what you're saying. Okay.
Tim, I think that's exactly what I had. If we can just classify what a dumpster is.
Okay. I appreciate that. I'll get that in there.
Tim, are the gates required?
Yes, so that is under 4C.
Okay.
Now, behind my office building is a lane. And next door to my office building is, it's a food service establishment. And they've got what I call a dumpster, it's a county pick up and set down. Pick it up over the truck and dump it. It just sits out on the side of the lane. I mean, it's on their property, it's not in the lane. There's absolutely, not only is there no enclosure, but there's probably no way to put an enclosure around it. How does this deal with a thing like that?
Yeah, so under number six, I have the appeals section. So it says a property owner can send an appeal in writing to me for consideration of screening materials. May also appeal constructing a dumpster pad by writing if the owner does not agree with the decision of, that I make saying they have to do it or not. So there's, there's an appeals section in there. We, we knew that there would be situations that, because of the way the city's set up, it doesn't fit for everybody. But we do put the onus on the person to write to us.
See, the lane is so narrow that the, that the truck that services this dumpster, the only way you can come in on it is a shallow angle. And so the dumpster sits at an angle. And it just fits in there without blocking the fire exit. In other words, you can still get around it, get out of the building in an emergency. But other than that, it takes up everything and it's cocked at an angle.
Yep.
Has to be. Or it can't be serviced. And there's nowhere else for this restaurant to put anything like that, you know, unless they take it home every night.
Right. No, I mean, we, yeah, we recognize that there would be some issues.
Okay.
But yeah, we're just allowing, doing it case by case basis.
But you're going to have to, they're going to have to go to the appeals board to get off of it, is it what you're saying?
They would write me first and then I would make a decision. And then if they didn't like my decision, they would go through the appeals process. And then this won't go, I need to, I thought I had it written in here, but maybe it's in the International Property Maintenance Code. So this won't go in, this won't be enforced until six months after this is adopted. And in the meantime, this year we were lucky enough to get some, we have money in our budget for community outreach. I was trying to think of what the actual term was. So we'll spend some of that money reaching out to.
Sure.
To everybody with dumpsters in advance, so they can start getting these letters to us and we can start going, figuring out some of these solutions.
So you run around and identified all these dumpsters, have you?
No, we have, no, we haven't done all of them. But we, yeah, we'll just, we'll do our best to get out to the commercial areas and, and put stuff on our website and all that other good stuff.
Sure.
Yep.
Well, I think this is a good piece of legislation, there's no question. And I think it, for the most part, people have been pretty careful about their containers. But there have been some exceptions. And I think this is going to help clean things up a little bit.
Yeah, I think it'll be just, it'll be nice to, there's just some areas that you go down and
Yeah.
These dumpsters are out. There's a couple on Pennington now and not even sure whose they are. So at least if anything, we start identifying who's dumpsters they are and maybe find another location forum setback a little bit. So there'll be some compromises and stuff in here. But it'd be good to get everything set up properly.
Very good.
Yep. Because I gave this to you late, of course, and this is just like a consult for the mayor and council.
Sure.
If you guys want to take some time to read this, you guys can send me an email individually and let me know if you have any other issues you have. If it's something major, then I can always swing it back to you guys. If not, I'll just, I'll go forward.
Yeah, well, since this is not a voting matter, well, I mean, I'm sure any kind of comments or suggestions from any one of us is appropriate.
Yep, I agree.
And any other questions from commission members? Comments?
Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing this with us.
Yeah, yep, quick and painless.
Now, this is all that you have on your agenda for our formal part of our meeting, is that correct?
That's, that is correct. Yeah, and just, just so everyone's aware, we, we do, we have gotten some development applications in for a Wawa. There is potentially something coming for a Sheetz, a little bit further down the road. So there is some stuff that's, that's coming up. Just be prepared, I think we already have, I think the Wawa's on the December agenda already. So we'll have a December meeting, just to give everyone's a heads up on that. We'll try to make things short so we can continue with the comp plan stuff, the meetings afterwards. But some of the residential stuff, we've put on hold for now because there was a water model that was being redone. We now have the information from that water model and they're kind of processing in administration how they'll handle, how they'll handle that and how to move forward and who's going to pay for what. And so it's a little bit sticky at the moment. So some of the residential stuff is on hold that was supposed to be coming up soon. But we do have some, some things on the agenda, just to keep everybody aware.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have one thing I would like to add.
Sure.
Before we close the session. We've had a vacancy for quite some time now on this commission. And surprisingly, I got a phone call today. And one of our previous, recent previous members would like to rejoin the commission. Harry Miller.
Okay.
Harry and his wife were moving to Pennsylvania. That's why he had to resign because he said, I'm not going to be a resident of. And they actually moved up there and stayed in a temporary home while this beautiful way out in the country estate and home, it's a really old historic home and everything. They were in the process of renovating it. And one night it caught fire and burned it damn near to the ground. I mean, they, they lost it. And they thought about trying to rebuild it and replicate it and all of that, but it was going to be way too expensive. And so they've now made a decision, they never did sell their house and have it grace on Chapel Road.
Okay.
So they've now made a decision to keep the property in Pennsylvania and take what's left of the house because half of it burned and half didn't. And semi restored it into a smaller getaway cottage. And keep that property as just a getaway place and live here. And so he's going to be reapplying to come back on the commission. I don't know how many of you all, you haven't met him. Chip, Chip, were you, were you here when?
Very briefly.
Very briefly, okay.
How was the alternate when he left?
The reason I think Harry is, would be a great member as he was is because of his extensive knowledge of Platts and property development and building construction and all that. And he has an engineering degree in building construction. And he is, is one of the chief construction managers for the Harford County Public School System. And so that type of background is very helpful. And he can, he can look at a plat and instantly see what's going on, you know, and all that. But of course, it's the mayor's decision. And I told Harry if the mayor would see fit to bring him back on, which, which I would certainly recommend, that he would come on as the alternate, as is our tradition.
Right.
And then work his way back up.
Makes sense to me. I guess the only issue I have is that we gave him a duck decoy as a departing gift. I think he's going to have to, he's going to have to return that. We gave him a duck decoy as a departing gift for the time that he spent on council. So I think he's got to give that back. That's my only issue.
That's funny. Tell the mayor to tell him that. I think the mayor ought to just yank his chain for about three seconds.
Right.
Saying, unless you bring, give me back that decoy. Okay, what, would, Sammy, would you consider advancing his name?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Harry did a wonderful job. While I was introduced to the planning commission, he welcomed me in. He was very helpful in, you know, just acclimating me and other new members into the planning commission. So, and when you had to be out, he sat in on your behalf and did a great job.
Thank you. And, but again, it's the mayor's decision and he only acts on recommendations from you, you and me. You know, that's kind of the way he normally does it. So it's all three of us.
Yep, no, it sounds good. Harry was great while he was here. Be good to have him back.
Very good. Now, so this concludes the formal session of our meeting. Do I hear a motion adjourned?
Second.
Second, alright. Now, we're going to move into phase two and that's our workshop. And who do I turn it over to? Diane? Alright, Diane Claire.
Good evening. I'm going to do things a little differently if you don't mind tonight. I have a video I'd love for everybody to watch with us. I think it would be beneficial for you guys as well as people at home who might tune into this as far as a YouTube video. It's a TED Talk, Ed McMahon, he's with the Urban Land Institute, talks about the power of uniqueness. And to me, I think it's a really great kickoff for the Historic Preservation Chapter as well as the Economic Development Chapter. So if you'll let me do that, that would be great.
Well, that was pretty powerful.
Yes, it was.
Good.
Yeah, I mean, really, really great.
I love his storytelling. So I was hoping you all would find it equally interesting and engaging. So, thank you. I'm glad you liked it. I, yeah, I thought it was really apropos to, to kick off Historic Preservation and our Cultural Resources Chapter. And also we'll be talking about economic development and thinking about this framework as far as thinking about Haverty Grace within this whole document. To me, it's really, it's really critically important to keep these things in mind. Let me put this down. So I am going to talk to you tonight about Historic Preservation. Let me get my clicker going. And then Tim is going to talk to you about regulatory framework. So Historic and Cultural Resources Chapter has been a chapter in our comprehensive plan for the past two iterations. And it's not a requirement, but it's, to me, it's, it's very needed. It's important due to the city's long history and our existing fabric. We have a very large National Register Historic District. And we also have a lot of publicly owned historic and cultural resources that are actually under easement, like the Lockhouse Museum, the Concord Point Lighthouse and the Keeper's House. The Decoy Museum is a keeper of artifacts and it's a historic building in and of itself as well as like the cultural center at the Opera House and the Moore Family Homestead. This is just the lineup. I continue to use this as a thread throughout our, our work sessions to show you where we are in trying to meet all of these chapter requirements. And so we are, like, this is number nine in the mix and just trying to check off the last few. The content of this chapter, and I'm not going to go through this chapter point by point like I have with other chapters. This is more going to be an overview of a lot of images and a lot of maps and stuff like that and food for thought. But the content of this chapter, I hope you had a chance to read it, came out on Friday. We have an introduction, a background for local preservation efforts. Our local program framework, which has changed a lot actually in the past two months, which is awesome. Strengthening preservation within the city, the importance of preservation for economic development, public awareness and property owner assistance. There's also a section on Historic Districts, sub-areas for neighborhood conservation. These are themes from prior comprehensive plans, you'll see. There's a section on outlying properties, their descriptions and approaches. And I included a section on cemetery preservation because it's becoming a lot more forefront, the need to address them as cultural resources. And they take up large land areas and we can't ignore them as a land use. And we certainly want to value them and enhance them and protect them. And then we'll have the calls in action section. So this is a map within the, the chapter. If you've gotten a chance to read it, you'll see that embedded in there. That's our National Register Historic District. And within that, you'll see the 130 inventoried structures that are, that are identified. And then there's an inset which shows the downtown in relation to the whole city and the documented structures. And you can see the, sort of the, the density of structures. And those are only the documented structures. There's plenty more to document in our Historic District. This was the smattering of structures that were documented in the 1970s that created our National Register Historic District. So I'm going to proceed to just describe Haverty Grace in maps, our historic development of the city. So this is an early map. This was 1782. Prior to Haverty Grace, being named Haverty Grace in 1782, it was actually known as a Susquehanna Lower Ferry. We actually had a ferry crossing here in mid 1600s and, and a licensed one by 1695. But Haverty Grace got its name in 1782 with this Robert Young Stokes plat of Haverty Grace. This is the original 200 acres and you can see it still forms a framework for our historic downtown. The date of the plat, as noted, is April 1st, 1782. This is actually between troops, French and American troops passing to Yorktown in the fall of 1781 and their return in August of 1782. At this point in time, the Revolutionary War wasn't over yet. So it's really kind of interesting how we were named and whether Lafayette named it or whether French troops, there is definitely that connection related to the Revolutionary War and the important things that were going on here as a colonial highway. Soon after, that 1782 plat, there was a lot of land speculation in this region. And this is a survey map. It's hard to see if you get a chance to look at it online after all of these slides are, will be online. You can really get a sense of what was going on in the region. They expanded Haverty Grace in a plan. It was about 800 additional acres. But there's a 1799 gentleman by the name of Hodekor ended up surveying the whole Upper Bay region and sorting, setting in place an expansion for the, for the city of Haverty Grace. I zoom in on that little inset that was in the corner that shows Haverty Grace. And there's actually a little ghost line of the original 200 acres that you can see. This is turned on the side. So to the, to the top of the image is actually west, north is, is facing to the right. So if, if you tip it, you could see the Robert Young Stokes image of the, the original map. But this 1799 plan for the city, the principal streets were set based on the Robert Young Stokes map. 132 feet wide. There is a Columbia Street that doesn't exist. We never reached that far actually, until, until we've annexed more recently. Other streets were set at 70 feet. And it defines locations for a public square, a battering house, a hospital, a college and all these, a jail and a courthouse. And it really formed the basis for subsequent planning after, after this. So this is 1799. And then this is a map, you'll see sort of the same image kind of planning. And this is a Septimus Norris map in 1838. You'll notice the railroad spur. We had the railroad here at that time. So we were an early, early area for having rail access. And at that point in time, they ferried the, the cars across the river. And again, you'll see that whole Hodekor map theme shown in the Leslie Hopper map from 1889. And we still reference that. You'll see that in deeds, the Hopper map references for, for deeds and lots. And the north, again, the north is to the right of the screen and straight up is west. But you'll see neighborhoods that were established at that time. But you'll see neighborhoods that were established at that time and smaller lot size and, and stuff. But it's just showing the interesting development of Haverty Grace and the thought. This is a bird's eye view of nineteen oh seven, what the town looked like at that time. We have an aerial view before the Conawingo Dam in nineteen, this was an aerial view from nineteen twenty-seven. The dam was going in in nineteen, completed in nineteen twenty-eight. And then this is an image of our downtown now, probably an aerial from ten years ago. And you can still see the fabric. It's all here. Local present, local preservation framework. What is important? Publicly owned cultural resources. There are resources that we've saved. They're under easement. They've been improved. We have friends groups that protect them and keep them moving forward and being used and enjoyed by the public. We have artifacts and historic material. Again, loads of historic buildings and museums and really celebrating our cultural resources. And this was a more recent addition, which was a donation to the city, the William Moore House, now known as the Moore Family Homestead. This is how it looked in the nineteen seventy-seven inventory. But we also have, we've had archaeology, and we've had metal detectors working with archaeologists to survey that property, for instance. We have a lot of things to explore here in Haverty Grace and certainly engage in. This was a fall study in nineteen, in twenty sixteen where actually metal detectors in the Archaeological Society of the Northern Chesapeake came together to survey the side yard of about a thousand square feet. We have surviving structures from the War of eighteen twelve. There's lots of work to be done. There's known stuff, and then there's unknown information, and there's, there's always more to, to understand. And we also have a lot of unique structures. This is called the Poplar House Downtown. It's from eighteen thirty-eight estimated, but it may be earlier. And believe it or not, it's a solid brick building under that facade. I had the benefit of taking pictures out of the attic, so beautiful views of the waterfront and just interesting details. And just most recently, which has been great in the past two months, we've had our first local Historic District, the Haverty Grace Colored School Museum and Cultural Center, came in as our first voluntary landmark. So that's a photo of the building. They just got approved October sixteenth at the last council meeting. Some images from their nomination, and this information and nominating forms and process is all online now. We have fillable forms for other people if they're interested in having their buildings as part of a voluntary landmark. So this is, this is available to others, and we are just grateful for this kickoff. Faculty and graduate pictures were part of the nomination. And even they had the, the engineering from the original edition of the Haverty Grace High School. This was the first African-American high school in Harford County. Important outlying structures, and these, I'm just going to mention the major ones, are Zion Hill National Historic Landmark. It is the only national historic landmark in Harford County. And it's located up off of 155, hidden in the woods. You can't see it really well from the road unless you know where to look. But it's an amazing structure from seventeen eighty-five. But it's largely because of the Rogers family, Commodore Rogers, as father of the American Navy, and his, his, his family beyond that as far as the, the national history related to that structure. Some inside photos from their, their landmark designation. And then this is a view from that building down to the bay. We also have places that have been utilized and retained within the development process. This is Blenheim. It's a private residence within Bully Rock. And also Mount Pleasant, which is also surrounded by, by Bully Rock, which has an MHT easement. And we, I described those types of structures within this chapter. And then we have lost outlying houses. There was the Harry Mitchell House, which was Cherry Hill Farm. It's now Scenic Manor, and people should be pretty familiar with Blenheim Run. This was the Mitchell Farm on US forty. That's now Affordable Housing, Blenheim Run. Lastly, go into cemeteries and just a couple shots. This is actually a recent preservation effort by the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution at Angel Hill. There's a site up there for the Grand Army of the Republic section of the cemetery, and they were doing headstone cleaning, which was using what they, it's called D2, to take the moss and the, the lichens off of headstones. It's what they use in Arlington, and they were rehabbing that, the headstones up there. There's actually an American Revolutionary War veteran who's buried in there. He was reinterred in this Civil War site. We also have a lot of forgotten cemeteries, and we need to understand them, and there's a big effort for cemetery preservation. There's a Coalition for Burial, Burial Grounds. Let me, I can't remember exactly the name of it, but Maryland, Maryland Burial Sites. It's really important to try to recapture these and protect them and know about them. This is actually St. James Cemetery where it was located. St. James Church is down in town, but this was the original location where they had a cemetery. And the cemetery is still there in the woods. The church was actually physically moved from that site off of Chapel Road to downtown Haverty Grace. This is, this shows Cedar Hill Cemetery. It's just north of Elizabeth Street. Cemeteries can be considered archaeological sites. And actually, archaeology was done up there to identify the headstones, the remaining fabric that might be identifiable for that, that cemetery. It's a, it's a Potter's Field, sort of a public cemetery, where people who didn't have the means were placed. And then this is a view from Mount Aaron Cemetery. The First Catholic Church was a cultural site that was located up there. Beautiful bluff overlooking Haverty Grace, great views of the bay. And I just want to pose a question after the TED Talk from Ed McMahon as far as what's important to you in thinking about Historic Preservation within the whole framework of, of who we are as a city and what is important for the city. And I'm just leaving you with some images, tree-lined streets and huge houses, churches and publicly owned buildings, smaller spaces, the context, what is important and how do we describe it? And hopefully, this chapter reaches it. If it needs to be strengthened, I'm open to ideas. Love your feedback. And lastly, I want to leave you with the idea that the greenest building is the one that's already built, just as far as thinking about Historic Preservation as protecting and reusing. I think we do a really good job here in reusing buildings, and just want that trend to continue. So thank you for your time tonight, and anyway, open for comments or questions? I don't know, sorry for the late notice or the late arrival of the chapter. I don't know if you got a chance to read it, but totally open for your.
Well, I think, speaking on behalf of the entire commission, we really appreciate the amount of effort that you and the rest of the staff have gone to, to present this to us.
Oh, thanks.
Yeah, it's quite educational.
Good.
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Comments? Questions?
I'll ask a couple of.
Sure.
Tammy, you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. I would like to say I am really thrilled that you added the cemeteries aspect. I was, had the privilege to work with a group up at Angel Hill, and we were also at the other cemetery you mentioned.
Mount Aaron?
Mount Aaron.
St. James.
Yeah. We had the opportunity to use the cleaning materials to, you know, work on preservation. And it just enlightened me as I was going through other cities that it matters because some of them are so ill-preserved, and I was, I'm just pleased to see that we took the efforts, you know, whether it be a church group or a preservation group, to get together to take time to work on that. That day was a collective effort of city and historic and community members coming together to help clean.
Was that when Preservation Maryland was here? They did a big workshop like a year ago. And yes, to teach people how to, how to retain headstones and, and maintain them.
And the chemicals are, you know, they're, they're definitely, you know, you have to use the sun and, you know, just scrub brushes and just be very careful, but you definitely shouldn't wear your name badge.
Yeah, it's very specific. They say not to use bleach. A lot of people want to go out and bleach the lichens off, and it's very hard on the, the stones. It's a specific project called D2, I believe, and it's a biological removal where it, it causes the, the lichens to die, and then it, it fades over time. So they turn the, the stones kind of a funky orange at first, pink orange, but then it, it fades with the sun and.
That's a very similar chemical to, these companies that go around doing what's called soft washing of houses. You don't power wash a house or a roof anymore because you can damage the, particularly the roof shingles. And, and soft washing is spraying the stuff up there, and then it takes several days and two or three rainfalls for it all just to kind of wash away. And that's what it does. It just, it just kills the lichen. And then I had it done in my house about two years ago, and I was amazed. At first, it didn't look like it was doing a lot, and then I looked at it a week later, and it was a new house. Yeah.
And, yeah, help yourself.
In the last two years, I've sold the, the Blenheim Mansion and the Mount Pleasant Mansion.
Awesome.
And it was amazing to me how, you know, private individuals with really no, no incentives from government have, you know, really worked to preserve and/or bring back to life those two buildings. Which I think is great if, you know, for government, if, if private entities will take on that task and, and do it. Now, the, the Mount Pleasant home was under easement. So there, again, I think there, there are insights into what that does to value and what it does for contributing to Historic Preservation that it's going to be helpful to know those things when we begin talking about doing that with the rest of the city, you know?
Oh, go ahead.
Just a quick comment. Historic Preservation is a, is an infectious disease. And what, what that means is, is the more that people get into it and the more they spend their own resources to fix up places and to truly restore places, not just make them look pretty on the outside, the more of their neighbors see the value in doing that, and then it catches. And we've, we've started to see, I've seen a tremendous difference in the last 10 years as compared to the previous 20 or more years, 25 years of, of that, that sort of effort.
So much of it is, is voluntary and a lot of rehabilitations have just done because people love the structures and they're beautiful, and you can't replace them, and the details are amazing. So it is, it is a balancing act, and it's, it's important to, yeah. I, I don't know that we would ever do a preservation-heavy, but certainly Preservation light might be beneficial for us to think about from the standpoint of demolition. We have a lot of pressure here for the demolition of, and at this point in time, there's nothing that protects our buildings from demolition, so that's just a, I'll, I'll drop that out there. I, I described that in the chapter a little bit, which is different from having to do heavy easement or local zoning. That becomes more onerous, I guess, for property owners.
Oppressive.
Yeah. We have done so much, really, by so many voluntary efforts for, for retaining our fabric.
Yeah. It is truly a balancing act, and Preservation itself is incredibly important.
Yep. Anybody else?
I have a couple of things, Diane, and thank you for putting this together. I really enjoyed Ed McMahon's talk, too.
Oh, good.
And, and just the real economic value created by parks and open space for one, but also Historic Preservation. It applies the same way. As a general comment, too, we've touched, you touch on it a little bit in the text here, and we've talked about it before, but we think of Historic Preservation in terms of architecture and buildings, but I think we should also keep the landscape very much in mind. And we had a little discussion a couple of meetings ago, for instance, about Mount Pleasant. And it was unfortunate to lose the alleys of Boxwoods that framed the entrance to that house. So that's very much a part of the landscape. The streetscapes are absolutely part of the historic fabric. Buddy and I went for a bike ride up to the Deer Creek Valley Historic District, and, which is a very cool place. If you could, you know, you can drive up there, too. But you go up there and you realize there's not that many buildings. It's really about the landscape there, too. And it's about how they didn't improve the streets and the roads, and they kept them very rural in character, and the big trees right up against the edge of the road. I'm sure it doesn't meet any public work standard, but it's, it's just gorgeous up there, and it's really about the landscape. And a more technical, and talking about the, maybe the need for more legislative action to protect things. I was, I read through the, very quickly this afternoon, the Historic Commission Sections of the Code. And does it, are, are buildings within the Historic District not protected? Do they not, there's a demolition section in that, and?
The, the Historic Chapter, the Historic Preservation Chapter was based off the model of the state, but it's voluntary in nature. It does not designate an area. It is only through people voluntarily participating. And the Haverty Grace Colored School Museum is our very first voluntary landmark.
What, what's the status of the Historic District, then?
Our Historic District is National Register Historic District. It is a recognition of a collection of buildings that are historically important. It affects public, public projects, major highways, the railroad. It gives us bite at the apple for having a seat at the table for review, Section 106 process. So the sort of, with the, the bridge project going on with the Susquehanna River Rail Bridge Project, it was huge. That was, that was our way to affect how that was going to affect our downtown because it comes into the middle of our, our Historic District.
But the ordinance talks about demolition of buildings, alterations to buildings within, within the Historic District.
Right.
I didn't see any necessarily voluntary aspects about that.
There, it is, one, there's two words in there that strike the, all the measure of it being enforceable from the standpoint of local zoning. And right now, it's, the National Register District is not the same. There is no local district. And it's, Historic Preservation is applied like local zoning. And we have just never been able to push that over the hurdle just because of property rights. Have, everybody's wanted to stay away from any kind of actual preservation as zoning.
What would it take, what would it take for that? What would it take for that?
Takes a lot of, to me, we've got to think about it and do it in baby steps. And my, I would love to see some way to control demolitions. Right now, the Historic Preservation Commission will write letters about houses coming down and being redeveloped, but they have no teeth. So, I mean, if there's a way, even just starting on a small scale to prevent, there's, there's nothing to prevent the structures, except the public structures that we have that are under easement, there's nothing to prevent anything from happening to the, the structures that we have in our Historic Fabric. So there is no local zoning. There is no local protection.
So this Chapter Ninety-seven doesn't mean anything?
It means we have the ability to accept voluntary participants.
Oh, no.
Just one small clarification. Nothing Diane said is wrong. We, we do now provide, we've gotten better about this. When there's something in the Historic District that we receive a demolition permit for, there is a 45-day review period where the Historic Preservation Commission can comment. They can try to call the person in and ask them to, to not tear it down or, or whatever. But again, as Diane said, there's no, there's no enforcement measure. They can't do anything about it. do anything about it.
I find that upsetting. I mean...
We're grateful that we have, we hold what we have in place now. And they've done a yeoman's job, Historic Preservation Commission, for advertising why it's important and getting, you know, information out to try to explain why these buildings are individually important and as a collection. I mean, it's really kind of amazing that we have, we don't have more.
So the Historic Preservation District is not designated by the mayor or city council?
As far as, you mean the National Register District?
Yes.
No. That was just a national, that is a recognition that was created.
Okay.
That was adopted in 1982. We managed to get that. And it's just, it's truly, it's a recognition of this collection of buildings as being important.
Okay.
And it helps us with highway projects and federal projects.
One thing I think we all need to understand in this process, and maybe Diane, you could do the research, is, you know, what about property rights? What are they and what can, you know, the city or government agencies not infringe? And what are our limits in that regard?
I'm not sure. As far as, say that again? I'm trying to.
You know, protecting one's property rights in relation to the zoning code, to, you know, prohibiting people from doing things to their own property. What are the laws on that? I don't really have a clear idea myself, but that is the sense I have is that the resistance has been a result of people wanting to protect their property rights to do what they want with their own property.
Well, I think in the past, maybe historically, and I can't speak to it, I wasn't here at the time, for when historic preservation kind of first came into Haverty Grace, people were afraid that the commission was going to affect their choice of paint colors, for instance, and how you replace materials and things like that. I mean, there's often, with historic preservation zoning, it tends to be pretty, you need to replace in-kind materials. And it's challenging from the standpoint of, you know, vinyl siding is not original. We have a lot of buildings around town that have replacement windows and vinyl siding. There are things that are sometimes at odds across purposes as far as preservation goes. So as far as property rights, right now, your property rights are based on zoning. Help me in this conversation, too. Please feel free to participate. As far as thinking about zoning and what you're allowed to do on an individual lot downtown, how you can build, you know, the form of your building, you know, and whether you choose to retain, if you purchase a property, whether you choose to retain that building that was there that you bought, or whether you start over because you want something more modern. So, I mean, right now, it's a matter of, I'd like to, honestly. I would like to work towards some sort of preservation light approach where it's not so onerous that it feels like an easement, but that we are retaining properties that potentially could be demolished because we don't have any protections. But that's just my personal...
I can share a vivid example of what it's like to go too far.
When you were talking about Port Deposit?
Yeah. In the early 90s, I was, my company was selected to be the rehab coordinator for a big block grant that Port Deposit got to rehab houses throughout Main Street there, which is essentially the whole town is just that main street, two miles long that's parallel to the river. And they had a committee over in Cecil County that identified the people that were eligible for the funds. And they set up the program on how the funds would be spent and set the limits on the funds and all that kind of thing. My job was to go in there. Once they identified a house and took care of all that paperwork, then I went in to identify exactly what needed to be done to take the limited amount of funds, which at the time was $35,000, which today would be over $100,000, I guess, and to figure out which were the most pressing needs and where to put that, best put that money. The typical, the recipient had to own the house and they had to live in the house. It could not be rental property. All right? And most of them were elderly people and a single person living in a great big house. And they couldn't even afford to heat the whole place. And most of those houses were in serious disrepair and they were gorgeous historic homes in serious disrepair. And that whole downtown is under a very strict architectural easement. And you had to get approval all the way down to, I forget the guy's title, down in Baltimore. Anything you did to the outside of the house, he had to approve. And he was extremely strict. You know, he was by the book. It was, if something had, a window had to be replaced, it had to be rebuilt exactly like the window was built originally. Well, that alone, and those dollars, $5,000, just to replace, replicate one of those big windows. We could not take out the window and carefully create it and store it in the attic for a future.
Renovation.
Preservation of wealthier person to buy the house one day. And there they are, right up there. All they have to do is bring them down and restore them. Wouldn't let us. We had to just let the windows go to pieces. So we had to go right past everything that faced the street and focus our money on the interior and let the outside just fall to pieces. You know, we couldn't do anything about it. And that was the most needed thing, was the outside. Or steep steps going up to the front door and that didn't come close to meeting safety codes today. But to replace the railings on those steps, they had to be replicated. And that would have just, would have eaten up half the resources allocated to that house, just to put a set of railings in for the front steps, when the poor person needed a new furnace. They needed this, they needed this. And it was just a horror show. It was absolute horror show. The people in Haverty Grace from the beginning of historic preservation discussions have been extremely reluctant to be forced to do anything. But they have very much wanted to restore properly. And I think that all they're looking for is the proper guidance. And funding, you know, funding, you know, like in one of these revolving loan funds or something like that. But I think that one of the best ways that we could encourage proper restoration and saving the houses is to somehow fund an ongoing consultant that the citizens, when they get ready to do something like that, we could even require that they invite the consultant or have the consultant come in and make all kinds of recommendations, you know, as a service to them, things like that. Those are the baby steps, excuse me, the baby steps that you're talking about. But to try to force the citizens to let somebody else tell them what they can and can't do with their property is just out of the question here today. And maybe down the road sometime, but not the people who live here today.
But you lose them all of the time. So it's just a matter of the economics and the love of the space and why it's important to try to figure out.
Sure.
To incentivize it. And just so you know, Hartford County created Historic Preservation Design Guidelines. They're available for us to use and want people in the public to know that as well for restorations. They use buildings from all the municipalities and it's design guidelines that are intended to fit for everybody, if anybody's interested as far as having, you know, replacement materials and proper fabric and just the language of historic preservation. It's a really, really great resource. It's one of the links that I put at the end of the chapter that I want to build into the chapter as far as that helpful language. So, go ahead.
So that was actually one of my questions you just answered. Because when I was reading that, I was wondering how close are Haverty Grace's guidelines to the Hartford County guidelines?
We don't have our own guidelines. So we refer to those. With this new, sort of standing up this whole landmark program, and we're really hoping that other people voluntary want to participate as far as the landmarks. And we have a couple of people who are definitely interested, which is great.
Great.
We reference those guidelines and the Secretary of the Interior standards for doing it correctly.
It's kind of like, like you don't have to reinvent the wheel. You've got something going.
Nope, it's right there.
Another question, actually, I have a couple. Mount Felix's non-permanent easement expired? What does that mean?
Correct. It was an early adopter. It came into the easement program, I think it was an MET easement, I think, but don't quote me if it's MET or MHT. When easements were first created in the state of Maryland, they actually had ones that were 30-year. They were not in perpetuity. Those don't exist any longer. And the gentleman who owned the building put it under easement in, I forget when it first was initiated.
Seventy-seven.
Yeah, it's in the chapter.
Yeah.
But it expired. So it is now totally, it's...
It can be demolished any minute.
Um, I would be surprised if the property owner would do that, but as far as, you know, development or anything.
Okay.
But, yeah, it could be. There's no protection for it any longer.
It'll go the way of Mount Pleasant, probably.
Regarding Mount Pleasant, my next question is, there's a line in your thing that says, "It is anticipated that the house will be preserved to support the Bully Rock project." What does that mean?
On, I...
I don't know what the Bully Rock project is.
Oh, you know what? That might be leftover language from the last round, as far as, and it was protected.
Well, it was being built.
Yeah. No, as far as that it was, it worked out well, that that building was actually preserved.
Okay.
The development occurred around it.
Okay.
So, and it was actually put under MET, MHT easement.
Okay.
Within that whole development process.
Thank you.
With four acres, I believe, too.
Yeah, yeah. Some of its context is preserved. I'll have to go back and look at that because I think I need to update the language, so.
Okay. And my last one was, the developers of Seine Hill take, there's, it's another line that says, "Take into consideration the beautiful views." I mean, is that still going to have beautiful views with those houses being built there?
Ideally, it will have context preservation. It's on a 22-acre or 20, close to 23-acre site. And it's, so it's got some context around it, ideally. And these are, this is a draft document. Ideally, the neighborhood that will be designed around it will hopefully honor kind of and be gentle as a transition around it. That's to be determined. But anyway, these are the words in a document ideally to be pulled out for, hey, can you do it this way if they're not doing it? But, so...
I have one more comment. And this is regarding the entrance into Haverty Grace. Most people coming here from out of state are going to come on the 155 off the 95. And we own or it's part of Haverty Grace all the way up to the 155, correct? So shouldn't there be a sign right there that you're entering Haverty Grace? Why do we have to wait all the way down to the railroad tracks? I mean, there's like a little tiny green sign, but I mean, like an entrance, like I was watching the video and he had this beautiful sign about, "Welcome to our city." And that's one comment. And then the last one was, I know that they want to put something like a Wawa or something there in that area because it's conducive to that with the 95.
Right.
I understand that. But if they do do something like that, I would love to see something happen in our community where we ask them to please be representative of our community. Make it somehow look like a Haverty Grace, part of Haverty Grace. I don't know how to do that with a modern building or anything like that. I don't have any idea. But if it's going to represent Haverty Grace, it should look, have the look of Haverty Grace. But those are just my...
No, those are, those are great comments. As far as it is our gateway. It is our front door to the rest of the world. That's how a lot of people come into town. I like your points as far as the monument sign. We have them on Route 40 when you come in.
Right.
But we've never placed one up there because it was kind of a moving target. The line kept moving. So in the meantime, trying to figure out where it would be best sighted with relation to the roads and the interchange and the roadway potential configurations. It kind of hasn't landed yet, but it...
It's kind of a mosaic coming down that street, down 155. When you come off the interchange and you come to the first traffic light where you can make a right going into Bully Rock, keep straight ahead and come on down the hill with the fields on each side and the cows and everything.
Yeah.
Well, on the left side, it's all county. It's not city. The city boundary is on the right side of the road. The street itself, for the most part, is in the county. 155 itself is in the county. It's just the land to the right of that, at Bully Rock entrance is city. Then you get further down, the county's on both switches over. It's not on the left, it's over on the right.
Oh, my.
And you get all the way down to where that boarded up, boarded up gas station is. That's in the county. And Maryland Avenue, where you make a right into Maryland Avenue, Maryland Avenue is in the county. And you make the next right and you're at my house and I'm in the county.
Well, I was going to say, and maybe the monument sign, we can actually, you know, think about a fixed location at this point because most of that has been annexed. But to your point, as far as how things unfold in the future for that area, the MOE, it definitely needs to be thought about carefully.
Right.
As far as it being our gateway. The uses are one thing, how it gets built.
We don't want to look like the McDonald's signs up there.
Well, to me, this is beneficial in many ways. It's not just for this chapter. It's for looking at the city in total and how, how we want us to be viewed as you, as you approach, what should that be? There are definite uses that can be, are known, need to be placed up there.
Right.
But also thinking about it carefully. We have an opportunity to think about it differently. So the MOE zoning, when it was created, was actually, shoot, 2000? I mean, that area was annexed a long time ago, well before the hospital purchased it. And it was designed with a whole idea of architecturals and open space and sort of a common architectural theme and lighting scheme throughout the whole site. And so that is actually our most descriptive zoning category. And I don't know that we want to get rid of those aspects of it if we may make changes to the uses.
I mean, it's a beautiful view. There's a view right there and then there's a view down near Maryland Avenue. And it's just gorgeous. And to take that away, oh, it would be disheartening. So, but anyway, thank you. You did a great presentation.
Thanks.
Let me just add, just to follow up on Jess's point about Seine Hill, let's keep in mind that that was part of an annexation agreement. And there's a concept plan and development. And preserving Mount Felix is part of that deal.
That's right.
That went from agricultural zoning to RB zoning, which is the highest density zoning in Haverty Grace. So there's a lot, there were a lot of conditions involved. Some of them might be slipping already. I hope not. But that was part of the deal. And that's how you can, you know, you can ensure, assure certain protections that you'd want, not just historic preservation, but others legally by making it part of a rezoning deal. But let me, is the Wawa up on 155?
No, the proposed Wawa application we got in is at the BP gas station on Lewis.
Oh, okay. So nothing up in the...
No.
Nothing up there?
No, nothing up there.
Okay. Good to know.
Thanks.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. Tim, you had some things that you wanted to tell us?
I'll grab the clicker for me.
You want to stay over there?
Yeah, I'll stay here. My presentation is about a much less fascinating topic, but mandatory. So this is mostly carryover from the last plan. There are updates to it since some things have changed, but we're talking about the regulatory framework. So in the regulatory framework section, we examine the ways the city can implement the comprehensive plan. Maryland Planning, they have the 12 visions. So this is the last vision, number 12, is about implementation. So the idea is that the comprehensive plan isn't law. It's a guiding document. But we can make it law. We can create regulations that enforce or implement the comprehensive plan. So this looks at the framework that we use currently and what we're allowed to use under state law. They have to enable us to do certain things. So this section, this chapter discusses those items. So we're able, under the Maryland law, to develop a comprehensive plan. We can enact a zoning ordinance and we have the ability to regulate subdivisions. We have all those things now. This is in the chapter, but this is kind of a long, it's not very long, but it's, it's long, but our process is a bit... it, it's, it's not very long, but it's, it's long. But our, our process is a bit complicated. But this is basically how our land use controls, um, the process that they go through from the moment that um, somebody puts in an application, uh, to how we decide what board that it goes to, if they're approved or denied or approved with conditions. And then they can make changes and it kind of loops back around this process until they're approved. So, um, that's in the chapter. You can, you can look at that a little bit more. Um, so the revisions to the, to the currently adopted regulatory framework section. Zoning was enacted in nineteen eighty-two. Um, there really hasn't been much change. I mean, there's been some changes in the zoning, but zoning districts are generally the same from the last comprehensive plan. There's been little piecemeal changes here or there, but uh, most of the zoning uh, from a comprehensive plan level in this discussion is, is the same. For those of you that were, were here, uh, my predecessor did a good job at shoring up our site plan and subdivision ordinances. Uh, in twenty twenty, there were um, a bunch of things that he adopted and passed and discussed with all of you. So, those, those areas have been updated. There was a discussion in there about this um, Unified Development Code. We sort of have that, or we have that now with, with what we're doing at Site Plan and Subdivision. But we're working internally on this um, Joint Development Review Council. So, basically getting all the different departments together and representatives from those departments, having a pre-development meeting, letting developers know that, hey, this is just a pre-development meeting. We're not giving you any approvals here. We're trying to help you through the process. So, we're working on that now. So, that, that discussion has, has changed a bit, a bit in the framework. These are the additional uh, land use controls that we have. So, this is just a, a laundry list that's discussed more in the comprehensive plan. I can discuss any of these things, but um, basically these are all the different ways that we can or we um, or we are um, regulating land use situation. So, um, probably the one we're weakest on is incentives. That was something that was um, mentioned by Diane earlier in the Historic Preservation uh, section that the city for some reason has done a pretty good job at uh, keeping a lot of things intact without a lot of incentives. Really, we, we had some push to, to turn uh, old office buildings, um, homes that were turned into office buildings along Union Avenue. Try to get people to move back into those uh, homes as the hospital's been winding down. So, we, we have some small things like that. We have um, tax incentives to have veterans move here. There are some things, but it's, it's probably our, our, um, our least used mechanism for land use controls. Uh, another big part of this section is um, intergovernmental coordination. So, um, working with the state, working with Hartford County and uh, Bel Air and Aberdeen when it makes sense. We can do this on a development by development basis. Um, for the state stuff, they kind of pass stuff to us. Um, and in some, sometimes we have to have them review things of, of ours. Um, they're supposed to be reviewing waivers for forest conservation. So, just recognizing um, not just the, the need, um, how important it is for the intergovernmental coordination, but um, how sometimes it's also mandatory. We also discuss the Maryland Planning Vision Number Two, Public Participation. And there's a longer discussion in there about um, actually engaging the public and doing a better job at that and not just um, going through the, the motions um, to kind of placate people, but try to actually get people in, involved. And then uh, relating the comprehensive plan to other plans and, and um, things that exist out there so that we're, we're all kind of on the same, the same page with other, other studies and plans. So, this could be emergency management plans at the county level, other comprehensive plans, county comprehensive plan, um, those sorts of things. So, the areas for improvement um, that we mentioned in here would be after this process. Usually a city goes through the, a comprehensive rezoning process. So, that's the implementation process of taking a lot of these land use things and getting them into the code. We would hope to find a, a consultant to do that work. We're obviously limited in, in-house and um, Diane and Eric have both done a great job at moving the comprehensive plan along. But um, it, it's hard to do day-to-day work and also keep this on track. So, um, it would be, it'd be important to get some help on, on the, the next stage after adopting the comprehensive plan, this implementation stage. We could strengthen internally our Capital Improvements Plan process. Uh, I'm not exactly, uh, exactly sure what that is now, but with inflation and some things, we've seen some projects that we've had money set aside for sort of go up. And, and there may be ways to improve the, the CIP, um, to, to recognize those things and to make sure that we have all the projects in place that we need to have in. We need to do better with um, uh, public information dissemination and communication. Uh, we do use the website and, and we have these public meetings and things now. But we get often at a lot of meetings that people weren't informed of, of something for some reason. Sometimes we did inform them and they, they maybe didn't remember or they threw it out or um, they just weren't aware. A lot of people don't use the internet, um, or, or don't have access to the internet. So, um, we do have e permitting software that's coming in that'll, will help um, with some of these things. Uh, but definitely we're, we have to, to try harder to, to do our best to try to get as many people as informed as possible in a, a meaningful way. And um, uh, just to continue to make small revisions to the overall regulatory, regulatory framework as needed. So, basically zoning is the big piece that we, we need to go through. It was adopted in nineteen eighty-two. It's a bit outdated. Um, we put Band-Aids on, on things over time. But we haven't had any kind of, you know, major changes to, to Section two oh five in, in over thirty years, in over forty years now. But on the other sections, um, the subdivision plan, recently I sent you guys some definitions about open space. You know, that was, that's something that we, we saw along the way. We should continue to, to bring up those things and do those fixes. More specific in zoning, uh, we should um, consider increasing residential densities in areas where it seems appropriate. This could be just in the, the downtown area in infill lots, allowing development on smaller lots. There, there's a, a lot of things we could do, allow multifamily in more areas or, or better define uh, multifamily as, you know, more than, more than two units, which is kind of confusing now. There, there's no, there's no distinction in our code between a duplex and a multifamily. So, it'd be, it'd be good maybe to start, recognize those kind of in-between uh, style developments. To try to tie new development uh, to transit options or, or the other way around. I don't think there's transit that goes up one fifty-five now. That may be something important that we, we try to explore with county transit at some point. And uh, recognizing um, like at the hospital, when that redevelops, that there's a bus stop across the street, um, incorporating um, multimodal transportation in these areas or requiring that to happen so that you have, um, you have better pedestrian paths, better bicycle paths, bicycle, bicycle facilities that are, are linked to a bus stop, similar to what you see on the corner of Atsigo and Juniada now, where we have a couple um, electric plug-in stations. There's the bus that takes people to Baltimore in the morning there. There's a um, um, the park and ride lot. And then the, uh, there's a bike rack there also. So, trying to incorporate all those things. I mentioned um, uh, performing an economic study of the MOE zoning district on Route one fifty-five. And examine what commercial future land uses could go up there. A lot of this is, so this mentions economic study of what uses should go up there. But we should also take another look at that area as far as uh, looking at the gateway and how that represents um, the city. So, so uh, that whole district definitely needs to be looked at again. And then we have this funny table one. I'm not sure how much it's come up um, since I've been here with stuff. But we have um, this is supposed to be a summary table that looks at all the zoning districts and the different uses and discusses what the minimum lot sizes are and, and minimum coverages are. I think that probably had, there's probably been some code updates and language that haven't been represented in the table. And I think just that way of looking at, at zoning has changed a bit. So, it'd be good to have um, that table one looked at and, and redefined and make sure that it makes sense for the, for the city. Just as supporting resources, this, these are the different zoning codes that we looked at, the Maryland Planning Visions, and then obviously the enabling legislation from, from Maryland. Um, and that sort of is the, the bird's eye view of our regulatory framework. And I'll, I'll take any questions or discussion.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Any, anyone?
I, I just have a couple of thoughts on that. One is, uh, one thing I've, I've mentioned before is that I think we have more tools at present than we take advantage of and that we're not coordinating them as much as we might. I'm thinking of specifically the Landscape Sustainable Ordinance, the Forest Conservation. And I don't think this commission has necessarily received complete applications in that regard and, and reviewed all the, those items comprehensively with site plan and subdivision applications. The result being the landscape, uh, the subdivision is approved and then the landscape is approved somewhere else. And then that always leads to issues. And it's, it just, it doesn't give the commission a chance to do comprehensive review and it doesn't give the public a chance to see everything all at once as it's being reviewed and approved. So, I think we could, you know, we could just improve some of our internal procedures that way. The other thing I, I think we could improve without doing a whole lot is just improving public notice of applications and meetings. I know the subdivision, the site plan regulations say you have to notify people adjoining or across the street. But for instance, that first subdivision in um, you know, up on Cyan Hill, a lot of people didn't know about that at all. And you know, everybody who lived in, at Scenic Manor up there, everybody there should have gotten a notice that that application was pending. And I'm sure they didn't. And I know there's flexibility even within the existing code there to notify additional people. I don't, I looked back at the subdivision regs too and I did not, I didn't see any notice requirement whatsoever in the subdivision regulations. Maybe I missed it, but um, I think that's really important. One thing I, you know, I, I kind of always lament that nobody's here when we're talking about things. But I heard that, Jimmy, we had a hundred views of our last meeting on YouTube. Was that true? I don't know. Yeah, so I think people are watching at home anyway. So, uh, that's cool. And I do like the economic study on the MOE zone. That's going to be, that's a really important site. I appreciate, you know, what you've done with a hospital site downtown and that kind of engagement. Um, I think that could have used a little bit more, as I've mentioned to you, more of an economic analysis too to see what's really feasible there. But hopefully we do a really proactive, comprehensive review of the MOE um, site too. So, um, we're way ahead of that. So, we don't end up with Wawa or something. And, or if we do, that it's really in a way that's very controlled and, and managed. So, again, I think we have a lot, you know, there's a lot we can do with what we have, um, even as we look at, on how to improve things.
I have one question, Tim. It's, uh, you recommended a consultant and I was wondering how do you go about doing that?
Yeah, it's a bit of a process. So, I mean, part of recognizing it in the comprehensive plan is if we decide to go after grant funds, then we can say, hey, we've recognized in this study that we, we need assistance with this. So, we could go seek a grant. Um, we could also, in the next um, budget, we could request money for that to the mayor and council when we go through the, the budget process. Uh, once we get those funds, um, our internal procurement requirements requires to put out a request for proposals. And then, um, then we go through that process. So, we usually send that out. We get a set of questions. We answer the questions. We make a revision or two to the, the proposals. They send it in. We'll have a team internally. Sometimes we could use members of the, of the um, Planning Commission or whoever also. We'll have some team that all, on their own individually grades each of the proposals. You don't, you, you have to select a qualified applicant. You don't have to select, select the cheapest um, in these situations. So, there'd be some kind of discussion back and forth. Then you come up with a contract, agree with the person and have them uh, begin on the scope of work.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? Okay.
Great. Thank you, everybody.
Before we close, um, I know that um, we normally meet on the second and fourth Mondays of the month. Can we just take a look at November and see what you're, I, I know we've got the long range calendar, but what specifically are you thinking of as of now for the thirteenth?
Yeah, I think we're back on schedule for November and December to do the second Mondays.
Just, just the second Monday, not the fourth Monday?
Yeah, this, this one was the exception because we had Columbus Day.
Okay.
So, we were closed that day. So, yeah, we'll do the, the um, second Monday of November, second Monday of December. I can give you those dates really quick.
Thirteenth of November?
Yep.
November thirteenth is second Monday.
And the eleventh of December?
Huh?
Yep, that's right. Good. So, we have both of those. And then um, I think Eric had sent something out. It's, this year was, it was my first, um, my first year in it and first full year working with you guys. And I was trying to consolidate. So, we were just doing one Planning Commission meeting a month and just have it set on a day and pick the second Monday. And um, that ended up being the day for all the work sessions for mayor and council. So, between their first, first and third uh, Monday meetings, they like to have their, their public workshops on that second Monday. So, during the entire budget season for two or three months, that day's gone. And then we have Columbus Day. So, I think we probably half, half the days we were on schedule and half the day we had to move it.
Yeah.
So, um, Eric did a lot of work with uh, Tammy Brinkman and found, I think, that the second Wednesday of every month is, is clear of other, other problems. I mean, we say that now, things will come up, but um, sure, Tammy.
Uh, just to add to that, Marina Commission does meet on second Wednesdays at four thirty.
Okay.
So, I don't know how that would interfere.
Okay, we'll look at it. Um, if we have to move it, we will.
So, so for next month, we're going to stick with um, the second Monday.
And same for December. And December, unless something happens, we'll have, we'll have Wawa in front of you.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else? Uh, we don't need to adjourn. We'll just call it a meeting.
Thanks.
Good job, everyone.